And provide our inspirational reading.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Today I will be reading to you a holiday poem by an unknown author. It means so much on holidays to lovingly recall the many thoughtful things you've done, and thank you for them all. It means a lot to wish you all the love your heart can hold and joys that keep increasing as the days ahead unfold. Happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Cassidy. Now, the Pecosin High School Symphony Band has a presentation for us by video. That was wonderful. I have attended a lot of Zoom meetings, and none of them sounded that good.[225.31][225.31](Laughter). Do we have any additions or modifications to the agenda?
We do not.
We do not. All right, let's move on to recognitions. Need to introduce the Pecosin High School Senior of the Month.
The December Student of the Month is Lauren Lamb. Lauren is an exceptional young lady who excels not only adequately, but with her extracurricular activities as well. In addition to participating in school activities such as key club and student council, Lauren is a member of both the Islander March Band and Evolution Show Fire. She is well respected by the faculty at PHS, as indicated by her selection to the National Honor Society, as well as four subject honor societies. In addition to school activities, Lauren has been involved in many volunteer activities. She has spent countless hours volunteering at the local Kiwanis Club and at her church. Her compassionate and calm personality makes her a perfect volunteer for such organizations. In Lauren, one could find a wonderful example of a student with a tangible goal and is taking the necessary steps to achieve it. Please join us in congratulating the December Student of the Month, Lauren Lamb.
Right. Next up is Mr. Tillot's update on the reopening of schools.
Thank you, Ms. Sheila. Appreciate that. All right. Well, when you signed up to be on the school board, you didn't know you were going to have to be amateur epidemiologist, did you? Nor did I. So, we're going to go through another round of data, as we always do when we're together. Tonight, the data is not very impressive. So, we're going to kick it off before we get to that with something that is exciting and impressive. As you all know, last Monday, we welcomed our sixth and seventh graders back to in-person learning at Pecosin Middle School. And they get a double whammy this year, but they have done extremely well. They are not in their normal space of Pecosin Middle School facility, but they're in our new cottage court, we call it, out on the campus of Pecosin Elementary School. And our kids are adjusting well. You're going to see in this video some really cool things. And there's a great drone shot. For those of you who have seen that video, the welcome back video that the staff put together at Pecosin Middle is extraordinary. And they have some great drone footage of our cottage court and all the incredible work that went on over the summer to make this possible. So, we'll see a quick video about Pecosin Middle School's first few days of in-person learning this year.
Pecosin Middle School excitedly welcomes back sixth and seventh grade students on December 7th for the A-Day group and December 8th for the B-Day group. Not only are our students learning new procedures to stay safe, such as maintaining six feet of distance from parent masks, but they're also navigating new locations, whether it is within the heart of the elementary school or the community of portable classrooms. When students arrive, whether by bus or by car, the staff member ensures that they have completed the health screening and take your temperature. All students are able to pick up a free breakfast on the way to their first class and a free grab-and-go lunch at this specific time of day. Our fifth and seventh grade teachers are teaching both the students in their physical classroom, as well as the group of students that is learning from home. Through the use of new technology, students learning at home are able to follow along the instructions that are occurring live in the classroom. Although things look different from the last time they attended school in person in March, our students are excited to be back.
So, being back in person has been very, very good because I can ask my teachers to start a class and letting call them every time. And I'm using a private conference room, so I can go through the, if you can, I'm going to sit down, um, so I'm glad that I'm person, just so I can be able to learn in here, do a, so, and we watch, we go to that and tell that person to, to make it.
A huge thank you that is sent in to all teachers, school counselors, administrators, and middle school staff, whose efforts have made this experience possible for our students.
Um, the feedback has been extraordinary as our kids have come back to school. We've gotten really good feedback from parents and students about their first few days back, and they're excited to be here, and we're excited to have them back. So, we kick off every meeting, it seems like, with this, with our mission here, as advised on the CDC website, and our, our goal here is to get kids back in school in-person learning for all those reasons. And I won't read this to you again because we've read it every meeting, but we keep this in front of us continually that that's our goal, is to get every student back in school as quickly as we can, learning safely on our campuses. And we always want to be conscious of the fact that our, that health and safety of our students and staff continue to be, to be our top priority. So, we're going to balance that as we continue to move forward with our reopening plan. I was asked by one of our board members to remind folks of our, our mission as given to us from the Virginia Department of Education at the beginning over the summer, that, and this is lifted right straight from the VDOE website, that the physical distancing will remain important as a prevention strategy. Additional operational requirements will be measured, such as gathering limits consistent with the executive order, as we've just seen that happen again last week, and other mitigation strategies. Schools should follow all guidance from the CDC, VDH, and local health department to the greatest extent possible. And the CDC advises that all individuals maintain six feet of distance to reduce risk of COVID-19 transmission. That, again, keeps coming up, so we want to keep reminding folks that we are required by the Virginia Department of Education to follow the local guidance and CDC guidance as it relates to COVID mitigation. These are the six categories. Of course, we have new orders from the governor that masks are to be worn at all times on our campuses, and we are doing that with fidelity. Hand hygiene, respiratory etiquette, social and physical distancing, cleaning and sanitizing is going on every evening. We're going to talk a little more about that with some additional deep cleaning we're going to do after winter holiday. And, of course, our daily health screening with the Reuvena app. Contact tracing, which has become almost a full-time job these days. We're doing quite a bit of that as we err always on the side of safety. So, when there's a possible exposure, we immediately start contact tracing. And you have heard and seen individuals in our school community needing to quarantine for a period of time over the last several months. We've been advised, of course, to not just look at our own data, so we are constantly looking at the data from around the peninsula, and that 50% of our staff live outside of the city of Pecosin. We're looking for the goal of the case burden to be decreasing for two weeks and the case positivity rate to be under 10%. And, of course, the World Health Organization recommends below 5%. We're going to see some numbers today that are a bit alarming. If you remember when we presented just, just over a month ago, just under a month ago, on November 17th, there were 119 COVID cases in the city of Pecosin, and that number as of today is doubled, almost doubled. And our positivity rate when we reported out last month was 4.8%, and it also has almost tripled at 13.5% above the peninsula average and the state average significantly.
Weren't most of those in a isolated place, though, so it kind of skews the data?
Yeah, we're going to get to that. That's, that's in our report. We, we're trying to find out all the whys as we look at this, but, and we've got a full slide on the Bayside facility. Around the peninsula, that number of case burden, and that is high, not moderate, that's a misprint there, and has been increasing for 14 days. The mean positivity rate on the peninsula is 7.6% and increasing, and that's a daily rate. The, the other numbers you're getting ready to see is a 14-day trend, which the CDC now publishes. You'll notice, just I have listed, the last few months as we've presented, that number has gone up and down, up and down, but we're at our highest point yet with the peninsula positivity rate. And, of course, the cases have been identified in private and public schools around the region. This is a chart that we received from the Peninsula Health Department today, and I want to just draw your attention to, you know, it's been a steady increase around all regions, but ours is that kind of mustard color line there in the eastern region. And you'll see, if you'll notice, down around, right after Thanksgiving, as that number significantly increased. And I want you to kind of focus on that as we start looking through these slides today, when and why possibly those things are happening. This was our report last month. We receive a weekly report from the Peninsula Health Department on Wednesdays of daily COVID numbers. And again, those, they pull out for us because we, that's the only place we can access those. That's not published on their front-facing website, but they send that to all six school divisions on the peninsula weekly on Wednesday. So, this was the Wednesday prior to our last meeting. You'll notice the trends over on the right. I won't read them to you, but you'll see we were hovering at a daily burden rate of about 8.2 per 100,000. And then our case positivity, positivity rate was extremely low and had been decreasing for 15 days prior to our last meeting. This is as of this past Wednesday, and that's a significant increase in positivity rate and case burden rate, and has been increasing, and, of course, has exceeded the highest risk category for the last several weeks. The previous slides are using the former metrics from the VDH. You'll see that, those benchmark scores there that we're looking for in positivity rate and case burden. But the new data is a 14-day trend, as we mentioned, so you see much larger numbers. But to put those in perspective, you know, slide back, what we're looking for in the lower, lowest, or even moderate risk are numbers between 20 and 50 of case burden and between five and eight in positivity rate. This was where we were a month ago, at 123 per 100,000 cases in case burden, and our positive, our case positivity rate was at 4.8, again, in the lower range. And here's where we are today. And that's the, significantly the highest rate in the region. You'll notice, again, I'm drawing your attention to the far right where you see that significant jump. And as Mr. Freeman indicated, we're going to talk about the why of a portion of that, a significant portion of that, that happened in the last two weeks after Thanksgiving. There is a COVID outbreak in a facility in Pecosin, a nursing facility. These are the numbers directly off of that facility's website, so it's not private information. It's shared publicly. And you'll notice there were 47 residents in this facility and 18 employees, a total of 65 cases that populated in that data that you just saw. So, of the 238 current cases, and again, they're cumulative cases, all of that data tracks back to July. It's cumulative data, but of the recent cases that now are topping at 238 today, 65 of those cases are in a, in one facility. So, that's about 55 cases since we last reported of increase that are not associated with this facility, just to give you some rough numbers. Now, I've asked from the Health Department if we could then get those other case burden percentages and case positivity percentages delineated without the, the outbreak in that facility. And they said they would work on that data, but they don't populate that locally. It comes from the Center for Disease Control. So, they're working on trying to get us that data. I have an idea. I won't get it quickly, unfortunately. We've been asked by several people now that there are known cases in our building, and I want to clarify, in our buildings and in our school community, that none of those cases to date have any evidence or indication that they were transmitted in our schools. So, they're outside transmissions of people who happen to attend our schools or work in our schools or have connection with our schools in person. So, if you look at this, we've been asked to publish this information, so we will go live on Monday. I mean, or, it may be live. Are we live already? Yeah, already live today, with this information, where we're going to publish our own dashboard of COVID cases in our schools. Again, not transmitted in our schools, but COVID cases of individuals, students and/or staff, who are positive COVID in our schools. We've been asked by staff and parents to provide that information, and we will update that Monday through Friday at around 11 o'clock daily, so our families can check that site to look specifically at what's going on as it relates to COVID-positive cases in our schools. Yes, sir.
Is, is it going to be broken out by school, or is it just general?
Yes, and yes, both. But with the caveat, and I'm going to show you the actual chart, and it's very simple. We looked at lots of elaborate ones that had how many folks were quarantining. It was, it was just a very elaborate process that would take a full-time person managing that because we are quarantining individuals. I think two individuals were quarantined today. And that information, we are going to publish as a total for now. And the reason that we're not publishing it by individual school or location is because we've been advised that until the number exceeds five, there's a possibility for someone's personal identity to be revealed, and we're trying to be very sensitive to that. And the VDH, when they publish on their outbreak website, if you look on there, you can trace schools that have outbreaks, they don't publish it until it reaches the number five. So, we're kind of follow that lead. And so, in you, in general, you'll see our four schools and then central office personnel and staff support. That would include bus drivers, maintenance employees, cafeteria and custodial staff. And so, a total of nine cases so far, and that's a cumulative total as well. That extends back to when we started collecting numbers as our staff returned to the building in August. So, although no cases would be better, we feel pretty good about the fact that we haven't had an outbreak in our schools, we haven't had a case of transmission in our schools, and other schools, you know, around us and certainly in the region and the state have. We do work, as you all know, very closely with the Peninsula Health Department. We communicate with them daily in some cases about any positive cases or potential exposure, and then we start the process of contact tracing and have done that. I think it's in large part, and I want to thank again Ashley Ryer and Dr. Antonia Fox work there, that are point people on that, along with our principals and assistant principals. We're making phone calls, sending emails as we contact trace to find out who has possible exposure before that comes into our buildings to create any kinds of transmission internally. We get a lot of questions about athletics. As you'll remember, last month, we had a lively meeting with a lot of interest about athletics. The Virginia High School League has been extremely busy over the last couple of months, not only developing their return-to-play protocol, a 28-page document that's posted and linked on our website, if you're interested in reading it in detail. You all had a thorough presentation by Dr. Ratliff last month about our engagement in the return-to-play, and as of now, we are still participating in winter athletics. Although we did receive a letter, as you all know, because it was shared with you from the director of the Peninsula Health Department last week, and I won't read it to you because, again, our board has seen that, but this is a paragraph taken from the letter. The letter is published on our website, on our return-to-school page in its entirety, if anyone in the public would like to read it, encouraging us to not to engage in contact sports right now. So, we are in the process of conditioning, which is what we do prior to sports seasons generally anyway. We do have our athletes participating, our winter sports athletes participating in conditioning, but it is low-contact activities at this particular moment, and will continue through the holidays as voluntary low-contact participation as we move forward. I do want to back up on this slide a bit. Many of you may have seen the, after the governor's executive order last week, the Virginia High School League sent out notice to all schools that there was going to be a mask mandate, that all athletes would have to wear a mask while participating. Can't really imagine a basketball player running up and down the court with a mask for four quarters and that being healthy or safe, but, you know, I'm not a doc. Fortunately, I think a better decision was made over the weekend. We received notice yesterday morning that that requirement has been rescinded. So, again, our athletes will participate in voluntary mask-wearing if they choose to wear a mask, but the Virginia High School League has rescinded the mask mandate while participating in athletic practice and contests. Instructional information. In that same letter, again, published on our website, there was strong recommendation, very specific language, encouraging all school divisions to suspend in-person learning for the two weeks following winter break. If you'll toggle back with me a moment to our numbers following Thanksgiving break, as predicted, all around the country and certainly no exception here on the, in Hampton Roads and on the peninsula, the numbers shot up significantly after the holiday break. That same prediction is in, in place for after the winter break, and they are predicting it to be significantly more because of the length of time that folks are going to be out, coupled with certainly the holiday celebrations and New Years. So, the recommendation is to suspend in-person learning for those two weeks. Of course, the virtual will continue. And to my knowledge, most, all of the school divisions around us have already planned this process, and we are planning the same. It does decrease exposure risk for everyone, and it mitigates the spread of COVID-19 post-holiday and allows that incubation period and quarantine period to take place before COVID cases end up in our buildings. So, our eight to 12 return to in-person, which we've all been waiting for and looking forward to, parents will receive tomorrow, all of our high school parents who are on the hybrid model, will receive correspondence, an email tomorrow with the students A or B group that we've been working diligently on over the last several weeks and months. And eighth-grade students already receive that on the 29th of October. On Monday, January the 4th, all Pecosin High School students will start their new schedule. They'll start it virtually, but it will be the new schedule, and they will follow that schedule for the remainder of the year, even when they transition in on the 19th and 21st in A group and B group to in-person learning on the hybrid schedule. And, of course, we'll conclude with what we've, we've learned from Dr. Fauci, that we want to get kids back in school. That's the place they ought to be. It's the safest place for kids to be, considering the infection that we have in our community first, and that's what we intend to do. Questions? Comments?
I'd just like to make it, just not really a question, more of statements. There's nothing more frustrating than telling somebody a plan, this is going to happen, and it gets moved or changed. And I don't like that two-week delay. I just don't. We've talked. Kids are looking forward to coming back, the seventh and sixth and eighth graders got back, and you're going to yank it away from them. It's just not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tillot. Ms. Woodruff will provide our financial update.
Good evening, Vice Chair, Chairman Scheeler and members of the school board. For the finance report this evening, I want to review the audit reports. So, it feels like FY '20 was a long time ago for me, but I've been working in two years. So, the FY '20 audit- The FY '20 audit was completed by Cherry Becker, LLP, which has been our auditors. And the school division is included in the city's comprehensive annual financial report, or CAFR, as a component unit. The auditors issue several reports within the CAFR. The first one is the report of independent auditor, which describes the scope of the audit and confirms that there were no significant findings this year. The compliance section is not yet complete. That's usually where we get confirmation of an unminified opinion, which is what we want, which I believe we will get. But because the Office of Management and Budget has not issued final guidance for the CARES Act funding that we received last year, we have to wait for that. So once we get that, the auditors will complete everything, and then we will get the final report from them. There's also an activity funds report. Activity funds are those funds that are held at the school level, and they are the responsibility of the principal. For activity funds, the auditors review the year-end financial statements and perform an appropriate level of test work to confirm that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the cash receipts, dispersments, and ending balances. And that was the opinion of the auditors. So this is a very good report from the auditors. The activity fund communication letter is a report of internal control deficiencies. You will note that no material weaknesses were identified. However, on page two of this report, there were two minor deficiencies noted. One is that we have segregation of duties, which is a very common, every school division probably will get that because of the nature of the beast. The other one is a comment for our high school that one check wasn't signed. It was in the midst of May. So I'm not concerned at all. So they've got everything under control. These are excellent reports from the auditors. So congratulations to the principals and bookkeepers for all of their hard work. You have the activity reports and the letters that I just spoke about at your seat. And a copy of the city's CAFR can be found on their website. And if you have any questions, once you have more time to review, just please let me know. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Woodruff. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Ms. Woodruff, have we given any indications when we'll hear from the CARES Act funding is, or when those delays are going to?
When the final guidance will come in. I don't have that information from the auditors quite yet. They've been waiting. They've done some initial testing, which is common where they ask us for sample items. So we've given that to them. They're just waiting for confirmation that they've checked off everything that's required. So, but we have until March 31st to complete it. So I expect it to come anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woodruff. Dr. Fox, would you come forward with the instructional update?
Good evening, Vice Chair Sheeler, Board members, and Mr. Tillot. My instructional update for you this evening includes an update for our proposed program of studies updates that we usually give you every December. It's a short presentation this year. I'm sure you'll be relieved to know that. Just a reminder of who makes up our committee. It's formed from our middle school and high school principals, our middle school and our high school, school counseling directors, our PBL project director, our two directors that we have at the administrative level, and I work with that committee as well. Our timeline, we begin in September where we publish information for teachers and staff to submit either changes, deletions, updates, or recommendations. This is their opportunity, if there's a new course that they might want to teach, this is their opportunity to share that information with us. In October, our committee meets to review all of that information. They can approve the information that's submitted by teachers. They cannot approve it, or we can table a recommendation because we need to get more information about it. We're here now where you all get the first review of that information. And then in January, we'll present it one more time, and we ask you to vote to approve it. The next day, we then send that booklet off to the printers. We print only a few copies anymore. Everything is posted on the webpage. It'll go live after your approval. February, believe it or not, the schools then begin the registration process with students and parents. And in April and May, the schools begin building their master schedules for the next year. So just a couple of updates. At our high school level, this year, we have the addition of an African-American studies course. This is a blended course that was developed by the Virginia Department of Education with WHRO. So the content, the curriculum is already developed. We do have a teacher who can teach it. And it's going to focus on the contributions of people of African descent and what they've, their contributions to our society. Students will also study the Atlantic slave trade, the abolitionist movements, and the civil rights movements. And again, it's well-supported by the Virginia Department of Ed and the WHRO programming. The other is another dual enrollment. If you recall, over the past couple of years, we've been trying to increase our dual enrollment courses here. We've got English, we have programming. We are going to now add Spanish to that list. So this would be a Spanish Five Honors Dual Enrollment Course with Thomas Nelson. So students will take both Spanish Five and get credit, six credit hours with Thomas Nelson if they complete all the requirements by the end of this course. At the middle school, we just have a very minor change this year. We wanted to update our course descriptions to the technology education courses that we offer. There's one course in each grade level. And we just wanted to align these with the competencies from the Virginia Department of Education, as well as the curriculum framework that's developed by the CTE Resource Center. So we have a document for you that we've provided on the back are the former course descriptions, and then you'll see the new course descriptions are written there for you. So just minor changes. There are no change to the actual courses, just the descriptions and some of the activities that we'll do with the students to bring it in compliance with the VDOE competencies. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Fox. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Dr. Fox, that dual enrollment program, are students able to apply for like fast plan, get financial aid for those? Because I saw at the bottom, it said about $1,000 for course textbooks and stuff. Are our students able, that are eligible for financial aid, able to apply for that?
Yeah, we don't, they don't have to pay for anything. The way we have the courses set up in our contractual agreement with Thomas Nelson, as long as we do certain things on our end, there's no cost to the students. So they don't bear the tuition for that. So all they need to do is do the work and pass the course. The money that we put in the budget is for any textbooks that we might need to buy or any work that the teacher who's going to teach the course may need to do to write the curriculum to be ready for the course.
Thank you, Dr. Fox. Moving on to public comment. Ms. Reimers, any cards?
Yes, ma'am. We have Mr. John Pickford to speak first.
I do have a comment, a statement, so you can understand where we're coming from. The Pecosin City School Board welcomes public comment during regular meetings. School board members do not respond to public comment during the meeting. All comments should address a matter related to Pecosin Public Schools. The school board will not hear public comment that involves an individual student-related matter, the disclosure of which would violate applicable confidentiality requirements. The school board expects that each speaker will be courteous, modeling for our students how one can respectfully disagree with others' views. Speakers will address their comments to the entire school board and not to one individual board member, nor to the superintendent, a staff member, or the audience. And speakers are encouraged not to engage in personal attacks. Speakers will present their comments from the podium. And the time allotted to speakers will be three minutes. Thank you, sir.
I originally wanted to make my statement when they paused sports activities last week. Back in some level of capacity. So I'm not exactly sure where we all stand, but I was going to move forward with my statement, if that's okay. And I wanted to thank the chairman for taking my call last week as well. I am here as an advocate for these student athletes to play sports. I just wanted to mention that all these student athletes work out throughout the course of the year in respects to time, sweat, preparation, to be ready when the sports season begins. They came out at first practice on their own free will because they want to compete and play the game they love. We have teams that can accomplish some amazing things this year. For instance, our girls' basketball team made it to the state playoffs last year, and they have that core group back again. They've worked all summer setting goals to reach a championship game this year. And it's not every season you can have a championship caliber team that can make a legitimate state championship run. And I know Mr. Jeremy Jordan knows how special that can be as a coach. Coach Shipage Arbrough told me in the first practice, they looked so sharp in energy and excitement from the coaches and players was off the charts. Anyone who knows, has played sports knows exactly how that feels to be part of such a special group. And the reality of the matter is the science and metrics confirm the youth is at the lowest risk of the spectrum. Taking further measures to maintain a healthy environment even brings that risk to a lower level. This past week, both the VHSL and governor have taken all the data and information from the health department and green light at high school sports. These athletes are willing to follow any protocol to allow them to continue to play the sports they love. In contrast, the consequences of not playing high school sports in some capacity is very serious. Possibility of this void holds a greater risk to the well-being of our kids, more so than the actual risk involved in the potential exposure. Research has demonstrated the continuance of restrictions shows significant increase in lowering our kids' mental and physical health. Please don't ignore the risk involved of not playing sports. Benefit of moving forward with approval of sports, it gives the opportunity to these players and parents who are comfortable with the risk involved to continue to work alongside their teammates and compete in the games. It also gives that option to any player and family that has any reservations to fully opt out and not participate. It truly offers options for all parties to decide what's best for their family. The governor has put it in the hands of the local level to decide on sports. VHSL is moving forward with their season and championships. You collectively voted unanimously for Pecosin to play sports. Schools in Virginia are playing their seasons. So to go back in any form to change your vote when the governor and the VHSL are supporting a sports season would be truly disheartening. You are our voice. You are our athlete's voice. Please let us continue to be heard. Lastly, I would just like you to take a second to envision this possible scenario. Where less than three months from now, we all reconvene in the same exact location. However, this time, it would be involving a celebration, a celebration of sorts with community pride, as well as achievement, where the entire girls' basketball team and coaching staff would be standing before you, smiling ear to ear, holding a state championship trophy, and saying to each and every one of you, thank you. Thank you for allowing us to achieve this once-in-a-lifetime dream. That'd be a special moment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I really appreciate your comments.
Yes, ma'am. We have Mrs. Lisa Saba.
Hello. I almost didn't speak tonight because I feel like everybody's getting sick of seeing me and hearing me. But my husband reminded me that as long as we still feel very passionately about this, that we just need to keep coming out here and reminding everybody, you know, how we are feeling. And I was very discouraged to hear the date is being pushed back. I hadn't heard until just now that that was going to be the case. I had been hoping, I had been hoping that we would stay our course. I guess what I have to say, you know, I've seen the letter recommending from the health department. You could line up 20 doctors in this room, and you could easily get 20 different opinions right now during this. We all know that. None of us live under a rock. We are all reading all the articles all summer long. We've all, you know, we know, like, we're all experts in epidemiology because it's all out there. For some reason, our health department, that's who we've been assigned to. I believe that we are being, we as a community are being manipulated by our health department. I really do. I think that they are making us feel like, as a community, as a school board, that this is what we need to do. We need to delay. We need to delay. We need to delay. I think it's time that we decide as a community what we need to do as a community, what our families want to do as a community. We know the reports. We see the reports. We hear it from all over the country. But we see Indiana in school. We see Nebraska in school. We see Florida in school. We see them playing sports. Their cases are not that much different than ours. It is time for us to stand up to the health department if that's what it takes. Because we need to just, we need to just do this. This is getting ridiculous. I understand that you say you want us safe, that you want what's best, that you want us in school. But it's time that we just decide to say, we hear you, health department, but we know what's best. Our families get to say. Our families are not stupid. We have brains. We see what's going on. If the teachers are willing to come and teach them, the families want to send them, then let's just do this. I don't understand anymore. I don't understand. That two weeks, you know what's going to happen? We're going to come back. They're going to have another letter. There's going to be another letter. And they're going to say, oh, now we got to wait till February. Now we got to wait till March. We're losing these kids. My kids are becoming apathetic. I know other kids are too. I hear it. I hear it in the car pools that I'm coming from club volleyball and club soccer. They want to go do that. They can do that. None of them are getting sick there. But I hear them in the car, and they're just like, I don't care anymore. I don't care anymore. Whatever. They say it's going to be January 11th. It won't be January 11th. I don't care anymore. We, as parents, as adults, we've got to do something. We've got to make a decision. Let's just do it.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Ms. Reimers, do we have another speaker?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. We have Jason Hazen.
Good evening. My name is Jason Hazen. I'm a resident in Virginia. I've lived here since sixth grade. I'm currently a teacher in Hampton City Schools. And what I'd like to talk to you tonight about is a curriculum called The Prevention Project, dealing with human and sex trafficking. Human trafficking is a local problem. It's not just a problem in other states and counties and countries. Virginia is ranked 16th in the number of reported cases. And Hampton Roads is one of the three hotspots in the Commonwealth. And with COVID, online predators are working overtime because now they have these kids, basically through social media, have access to these kids like they've never had before. The Prevention Project is a program developed with a multidisciplinary team that includes teachers, survivors, and members of law enforcement. It has already been adopted in all Newport News middle schools and a handful of high schools around the region, Smithfield High being one of them. It's nationally recognized curriculum. It is now more than 10 states and 600 classrooms. It's comprehensive, and it is able to be integrated into existing courses such as English and Social Studies. The teachers complete a one-hour training, access to full curriculum online, which provides lessons, plans, teaching tips, students' questions, assignments, and video resources. The program is updated every year based on teachers and student feedback and input from the expert curriculum team. While the program's success unfortunately can't be measured in how many students are prevented from being trafficked, there is a pre- and post-test to measure changes in knowledge. In addition, there are often unexpected student stories that arise as a result of the curriculum. And I'd like to share a few of the highlights if I could. One female student from a middle-class family came forward to let her teacher know she had been trafficked by someone she thought was her boyfriend. Romantic relationships are a very common pathway to trafficking in the United States. I myself have been told by a teacher in York County that while this isn't necessarily trafficking, it is a form of sextortion, that if you wanted to date somebody on the high school team, you had to sleep with all their friends. One student, one male student informed his teacher that he didn't think he could participate in the curriculum because of a conflict of interest. As it turns out, trafficking people was his family business. He ended up going through the curriculum and broke the generational cycle of abuse in his family. His mom actually called the teacher and thanked them for asking him to go through the course. And he went back home and basically dissolved the business. And lastly, as students finish the curriculum, they have a final project to apply what they've learned. One-year local high school senior created a technology solution to unmask online buyers. Not only did he receive an A in the project, but his technology is being used by state and federal law enforcement. This curriculum is sponsored locally by Virginia Beach Justice Initiative. Okay? While this is only a three minutes to talk to you all about it, they actually have a 20 or 30-minute presentation that they're happy to meet with you all and go over at your discretion. You can contact them from vbj.vb- You can contact them from vbj.org. Their executive director is a lady by the name of Lisa Kersey. This can happen anywhere. It's even actually happened in Northern Virginia where, in a middle-class community, because young ladies have been posting pictures online, they were actually being sextorted to go out from their middle-class communities and basically be prostitutes. So this can happen anywhere. But this, the average age that somebody enters into trafficking is 12 to 15. Exactly the age range of the students that we deal with. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your information.
That's all that I have. That's signed up, Ms. Sheeler. That's all that I have.
Thank you. I guess we'll move on to the consent agenda.
All right, Ms. Sheeler. For the consent agenda, approval of financial reports, the approval of no action, the authorization to change appropriation and to accept and expend funds in accordance with attached requests, and the approval of minutes for November regular meeting and the work session.
Ms. Reimers?
We need a motion.
We need a motion? Second. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Mrs. Hessel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheeler?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
We have other matters for consideration. Our first item is consideration of approval of the first reading for changes to policy seven dash 1.2, equal educational opportunities, and policy five dash 1.7, sexual abuse and harassment based on race, national origin, disability, or religion, and first reading for the adoption of five dash 3.8, sexual harassment prohibited by Title X. Mr. Tillot, do you have any comments on that?
No, Madam Chair, nothing further. These are new amendments based on new general statutes. So our attorneys have updated our policies in accordance with new general statutes. And I know you've read through the packet, and they're pretty detailed. The primary changes in this is Title IX grievance process, as well as additional individual groups that are identified in the.
Do you have any questions or comments about that? If not, may I have a... Motion? Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Reimers?
Mr. Frickman?
Aye.
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Mrs. Hessel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheeler?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
And now we have consideration for approval of the first reading for the adoption of seven dash 3.10, restraint and seclusion. Same comments?
Same comments. We, in Pecosin schools, do not actually engage in restraint or seclusion, but we're required to have a policy that covers it in the event there is an emergency that, in order to protect a student or a staff member, restraint or seclusion might be necessary. So our policy covers that, but we don't, it's not a practice we use in Pecosin.
We actually don't do any seclusion then?
No.
Okay. That was interesting to read, since the policy addressed... Okay, do we have a motion to approve the first reading? If no one else has any?
Just real quick, is that something our training staff goes through, or is it just a policy thing?
It's both. I mean, we do have, as our policy changes, we always update staff on any changes that would be pertinent to their work. For example, in the Title IX policy change, there's new publications that we have to have placed in certain places in the building notifying folks, and we'll have an update as soon as this policy passes for all staff.
Do we have a motion to approve the first reading?
So moved.
Okay. Excellent. All right. So have any other questions?
Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Ingram?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Mrs. Hessel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheeler?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, let's move on to communications and other matters. Tillot, do you have anything?
Nothing further, Madam Chair.
All right. Mr. Freeman? Oh, I'm sorry. Cassidy Spakes, yes. I've been looking forward to your report.
Pecosin Primary School. Pecosin Primary School is grateful for the support of our families and community. Our PTO provided dirty bags with tea and cookies to all the staff to say thank you for being tea-riffic. The Pecosin Education Foundation also awarded over $1,300 in grants to teachers for instructional materials. Thank you to everyone who supported the PEF Race, which funds... We're also encouraging holiday spirit and boosting staff morale, staff dress-up days, offering food trucks on-site, and providing holiday-themed masks. Our preschool students are making cinnamon ornaments this week, and our wonderful custodian, Ms. Nikki, decorated our foyer for all the special winter holidays. Pecosin Primary School wishes everyone a safe and happy holiday season and a joyous New Year. See you in 2021. Pecosin Elementary School. Pecosin Elementary School, we have been very busy learning many new and exciting things. We have started a virtual coding club, which is open to all third through fourth graders. Information was sent out to families. If you are interested and have questions, please contact Kelly Purcell at TRT. Students have also been focusing on the Hour of Code. Third graders have been learning about nonfiction texts, features, and instead of a teacher creating one anchor chart for the class, as the lessons were taught, the students were able to create their own anchor chart by cutting out pictures from magazines and newspapers and gluing them on the... Fourth grade, fourth grade students are having a STEM activity this Thursday and Friday, and one teacher shared that her class would be seeing who could build the tallest tree using gumdrops and toothpicks. Fifth graders have just finished working on division and are now starting algebra. All in all, PES students and staff have been working very hard and are ready for the upcoming winter break. Pecosin Middle School. Pecosin Middle School has been very busy. The second marking period began on Monday, November 30th, which coincided with the start of our new schedules. A huge thank you is extended to our outstanding school counselors for all of their hard work in rebuilding our master schedule. In preparation for in-person learning, our VTSS All-In Academy made videos to demonstrate some of our new help mitigation procedures and provide students with a virtual tour of our new campus. Thank you to the Pecosin Fire Department for helping us with this. They provided the drone footage to give students a better view. PMS staff welcomed back sixth and seventh graders beginning on Monday, December 7th, for our eighth-day students. It was a cold and rainy day, but everyone was super, and the rain couldn't dampen the excitement. We're now working hard to prepare to welcome our eighth graders back to in-person learning in January. We would like to thank the PMS parents for their support and patience throughout these transitions and wish everyone a wonderful winter break. Pecosin High School. The past month has been a busy one for the Pecosin High School. Our school-wide focus on being one team continued to be evident as students worked to get back to our community. Our key club conducted a food drive to support the parish food pantry, as well as over 2,000 handmade cards for residents of local long-term care facilities. National Honor Society students are providing virtual tutoring supports, and the SE is conducting a winter coat drive. Our students continue to strive to be their best, and we are excited to congratulate our core students for the success in the virtual audition course auditions, with nine PHS students selected as delegates. Additionally, our DECA students participated in a virtual regional competition with eight students placing first and moving on to the state competition, and three students earned second-place awards. As we prepare to welcome students back to in-person learning, teachers participated in professional development to support live streaming, as well as strategies for teaching on our new schedule. Students are reminded that our new schedule will begin virtually on January 4th, in advance of students returning to the building, and more information will be shared with families this week. Classrooms are being organized, directional markings are in the hallways, and most of all, we look forward to seeing our Islanders. We wish everyone a safe holiday break and look forward to what 2020, 2021 has in store. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spakes. That was excellent. Mr. Freeman?
I'd just like to thank our speakers for speaking tonight. And Ms. Saba's passionate comments there, I know a lot in the community feel the same way. I'd just ask everybody to keep your torches and pitchforks in your garages for just a little bit longer, and if the next letter comes from the health department, also apply the matches for your torches. I'd like to wish everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Mr. Ingram?
Thank you. Just want to congratulate Ms. Lauren Lamb for her achievement of December Student of the Month, and just want to wish everyone watching and here Merry Christmas and a happy and safe New Year. And thank you.
Mr. Jordan?
I wanted to wish everyone a wonderful holiday break upcoming. I wanted to also thank the many organizations that still continue to support our school system. It's been a very challenging year in so many ways, and fundraising being one of the main ones. One of the things that we get in our weekly, our monthly report is the list of donations by different organizations. And so many organizations in our community still, you know, give to our school system in a big way by making charitable contributions and just things that kind of go unnoticed. So on behalf of those organizations that continue to support our school system, we wouldn't make it through a trying year like this without them. I also wanted to, you know, wish our winter athletes the best of luck. You know, as a high school basketball coach and having coached for 12 years, one of the things that our athletes are doing is they're just happy to be back on the court, be back in the gym. They're doing a great job maintaining social distancing, wearing their masks. You know, these kids want to do everything they can to get in, you know, that season. And for what it's worth, you know, I think kudos to our staff, to York County. There's so many other school organizations that have terminated winter sports and aren't even giving these kids an opportunity to participate. And unfortunately, you know, I have had, you know, kids in our program be directly affected. They are considered high-risk, and their parents are high-risk, and unfortunately, they've had to make the decision as a, as a, as a, as a family not to allow their son to participate. And that's tough to watch as well. But it, but just given, you know, the option for our kids to play is, I think, a very good thing. So if these kids are resilient, they will continue to do everything possible to get a, to get a winter season in, and I, and I hope that we can deliver on that. So thanks so much.
Thank you all for presenting tonight and speaking to us. It's very much appreciated. Have a great holiday.
I'd like to thank all of our speakers and their very heartfelt concern. Thanks to my colleagues for their excellent comments, and I sincerely hope that 2021 brings us all relief from our troubles. We all want the same thing. We're committed to the safety of our students, our staff, and our community, and we're also committed to following guidelines. So I wish everyone a holiday and a Happy New Year. All right.
And I will ditto that. Happy holidays, and I hope all of you enjoy some time with your family, and stay safe and enjoy this holiday season.
Do we have any other material for the board to review?
No, ma'am.
All right, then we are adjourned.